I'd like to call our Thursday, June 21st, 2018 public hearing go order. Member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Corcoran? Here. Member Morehead is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayco?
Here.
Member Olson is here.
Alright. Presentation of proposed property tax abatement for parking lot reconstruction and improvement projects. Director Martin?
Thank you very much. Well, this evening, you're about to conduct a public hearing. It's related to the abatement bond. And I'm passing out a recommendation from Springstead. Abatement bond is one component, approximately $2 million of a $90 million issue that we'll talk about later this evening. And one of the regulations is that you conduct a public hearing at this point in time. All that you really need to do is gavel the hearing open, take comments from the residents that may wish to provide comments. And I can answer any questions you have, but it's not a question and answer approach for the public hearing for any residents. It's really just for them to provide any comments that they might have. We'll have three action items at the regular meeting this evening. There's a resolution that will grant the abatement. Abatement bonding is an abstract method whereby they identify certain properties that generate a certain dollar amount. Tax effect, though, is actually spread over all of the properties. So it's a uniform application. I believe that we shared this with you in the past, but the tax effect is minimal. And with the fact that our large bonds that were approved in 2015 doing all of the destruction throughout the school district, people are going to see a negative impact on the tax component. For the average household of about $250,000, they're going to see something in the neighborhood of a $26 reduction in their taxes. So our recommendation is that you proceed with the hearing. And then when we get to the three different agenda items, I can explain further. But it will be granting abatement, then authorizing issuance and sale, and setting the date for the sale of those bonds. And then also a reimbursement request pursuant to internal revenue code. So those are three different resolutions that will occur. You'll notice on the screen or the front of that recommendation packet that we wouldn't sell the bonds until July 19th. And that gives your proceeding all the way. That is your last option to stop the process, believe me, with what you see as far as the market is. We're going to have a positive sale and hopefully close July 19th and receive the proceeds August 16th. So with that, I'll offer the resident to open the hearing.
Alright, thank you. Alright, do we have any citizens who would like to give input on proposed property tax abatement for parking lot reconstruction and improvement projects? Any citizen input? Any citizen input? Any citizen input? If there's no input, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to call our Thursday, June 21st, 2018 Forest Lake Area Schools regular school board meeting to order. Member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Morehead? Here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayco?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Corcoran? Here.
Alright, should we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Excuse me, I was trying to get my microphone on. I would like to add something to the agenda, just because of the responsibility that I have. They asked me to ask the board for a referendum or something of understanding. Because going through the process of electing an executive director, the interviews are going to be starting in 1st of January. And have Gail or whoever's going to take my place come in and have interviews with something that, you know, you've never been a part of. They thought George and I are both going to be finished. And if we could, but in our joint statement, you can have a former board member hold that position. So if we would, I don't know what you have to make, they said bring up the meeting, some sort of understanding that I would...
I'm looking for a motion to assign you or appoint you to their interview process as an executive official member. So you can put that on the agenda and take care of that and somebody can get that in. Member Morehead, would you prefer that delayed or can that be next Thursday's board meeting?
Oh, I don't know. I don't think it'll make any difference. Sure.
If it's a time agenda, let's do that or put it on the agenda so it's there.
Okay, you can get the verbiage for it.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, do we have anything that people would like to pull from their consent agenda 31234? Do we have a motion to approve 31234 consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Jim, would you like to come up and talk?
Thank you, member chair, thank you school board. I would like to take this opportunity to formally introduce you to Michael Pennen. Michael Pennen is our new activities director that hopefully you will approve this evening. Michael comes to us in Cambridge. I'm not going to steal too much of his show and get out of the way, so you can do some self. Well done, Michael.
Thanks. Just to say thank you, I'm happy to work for your school district for months. Really excited to get going, I'm starting on Monday already, so really excited. I was actually over watching a little softball, I was waiting to meet him to get going. So pretty excited, got a lot of excellent activities over here. Been watching you guys from afar, I actually called Steve probably when Aaron got hired and asked. They had a serious candidate at that time, and he told me to apply anyways, and I chose not to because I thought Aaron was a pretty serious candidate. So I chose not to, and, you know, they've worked out the second time around, so really excited to make an addition here. My family's real excited for me to be here, so, you know, it's been a whirlwind. I was a football coach over there, I golf, I've been there for 20 years, so a little emotional week for us and our family and people talking. I didn't think I was that emotional about it, but I did get a little emotional this week. So I'm excited to just get over here on Monday and not have to deal with the questions and all that stuff and just get to work. So appreciate the opportunity to be in the Forest Lake District, thank you so much.
Alright, any questions?
I just have one. Do you have some tenants here in the area or any relation?
I got a brother lives in, he works at the sister clinic here. He runs a sister clinic, physical therapy clinic. He lives just outside of Lake, just outside of City, I think, or Stacy area. But no, nobody else.
We have some wonderful tenants.
Yeah. It's a great last name.
I'm just excited to come on board and, you know, you sometimes work with Aaron this week, is there like...
Next week, I'm with him, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, a few days there.
Yeah. Yeah, and he's texting me, and Corey's saying that most people have reached out and offered help. The citizens call any time, help yells, I'm very welcome from your insurance staff, too.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, welcome, and be sure, get your red, raise your cowboy hat, we expect you to have all the events. We get asked what our Rangers all the time.
I always forget, if Jim were after, he would give a lot more detail about how highly recommended Michael is to come to our district from the administration. Coaching staff colleagues from Cambridge, so a good fortune to have.
I hope we have a smooth transition.
Yeah.
You know, and if you got emotional, that shows that they didn't want to let you go.
Ah, no, no.
I'm just excited to have you.
There's a, you guys put a Facebook page out there, and my wife just told me about it the other day. You should read it, she said there's a lot of people that say nice things, and so I read it actually the day I went home. Yeah. She didn't know it was there.
All the folks are going to put it on their sites, too. Oliver Facebook, all the booster clubs, sports.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you. Alright, 4-0 business. 4-1 approved resolution authorizing execution of legal documents. Ties dissolution, sales of ties building, and the NGPA closed.
Yeah, we had this at our last meeting as a new item, and I'm looking for approval on this item. The district has a number of ties which is comprised of 48 major school districts. Needs authorized the ties dissolution, sale of the ties building, and the NGPA agreement. The tie's executive committee recommended that the tie's board will prepare for the dissolution at the January 24th, 2018 meeting. We received a number of services, as you know, through ties, including synergy support for our student information system, the finance for CodMash, which is our student and assistant data warehouse, private internet connection and computer IP addresses, and IUP software program and support. These and other services will be shipped into Sourcewell, formerly known as NGPA, with the exception of synergy, which will be supported by Region One. Region One has purchasing agreement of synergy and provides support for many of its local school districts. The advantage is reduced cost, and the resource facilities support. The resolution for you authorizes the district superintendent to legally invite the district to execute legal documents on behalf of the district in its capacity as a number of ties necessary to pass the closing of the transaction and complete ties, complete ties dissolution, subject to and within scope of the following conditions. District shall not be allocated to pay any dependent amount in excess of $20 per street to cover its proportionate share of the ties incurred by abilities. And the district shall not be allocated to pay an amount in excess of $3 per street to cover its proportionate share of the cost for maintaining and operating the ties building until the building is sold. Our liability costs, if we decide to leave ties before the complete transaction dissolution, is a $44 per street cost, and we see there's plenty of savings through the joint powers agreement to assume a lot of the liability of the current ties program. By staying with ties through the resolution, our share of liability decreases considerably due to Sourcewell assuming the balance of the administration debt.
Alright, the motion to approve 4-1?
Move to approve 4-1. Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know what's, what will happen with the proceeds for the building or...
There's one concept where the proceeds of the building will cover its current debt. If it sells for a higher premium or price, then that may be allocated out to the supporting project as a way to recoup the $3 per street costs.
Alright, there's no further discussion. Member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayco?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
And member Morehead?
Aye.
Alright, 4-2, approved 2018, 2019 budget.
Well, you might have noticed that somehow I flipped the screen again and only have one up, and I'm not going to risk going upside down again. So we'll just have to work with this document. I've got a little takeaway for you, so we can go ahead and pass that around. I'm really excited, though, that we're seeing some growth in the community education fund. I think the last time, on our first review when we presented this to you, we were targeting kind of an amount that's parallel to what occurred before. Food service fund is going to have an increase in cost. It's federally mandated that they increase those prices. There's a formula now, and it looks like we'll probably have that nickel increase every year for the next three or four years. So that's included within food service construction fund, about $34 million left to spend out. So that's still pretty exciting, and, you know, I gotta tell you, pretty darn distracting. I tell folks quite often that Dr. Massey asks me what's going on with the budget. I just tell them I'm kind of distracted by all the cranes and trucks driving around. This is quite an undertaking of almost $150 million. $143 million of improvements throughout the school district, and that's just amazing and incredible. Well, I want to focus a little bit on the general fund. As you know, we have had year after year of budget cuts. And Dr. Massey's document here details $5.5 million of reductions before the $2 million that we just took this spring. This slide details out some of that instructional resources, quite a magnitude there. People, textbooks, technology, even elimination of the junior high swimming program. Amazing stuff. 19 elementary faculty over that time period. 17 and a half secondary faculty. Administrative cut, we also had one with this last round. Clerical positions, communications, capolale, athletics, and then other adjustments to the budget. So you're all very familiar with those activities, and you're very familiar with this past April. We did 1.7 million of reductions. That was very painful for the board to approve. Almost a quarter million in administration, plus some reductions of $160,000. Activity adjustments, almost of $150,000. Instructional reductions, I put the teachers in parentheses, I think we need to be blunt and talk about the dire straits that we are in. $380,000. Support positions and related services, almost $303,000. Services and resources, another quarter million. And $200,000 in special education. So that was just April 5th, and after a hearing in April and then a subsequent hearing in May, closing of Montessori Elementary School rounding out $2 million of budget cuts, rather significant. And if we're unsuccessful this November, it's very likely that budget reductions are in Forest Lake's future. This is our last opportunity to continue referendum powers. Otherwise, after this budget year for 1920, you do have some referendum authority of your own, $300 per pupil. You have the $424, that adds up to $724, but you're currently above 800. So failure this November also means a loss of approximately $1 million from your current revenue stream. Quite significant. What I can tell you about this year that we're closing up, June 30th. Revenues are anticipated to be $73.5 million. For next year, they're dropping by about a million, primarily due to loss of students. Special education state aid. State aid, special education funding is further compounded by the fact that the governor vetoed everything. So we've got about quarter million dollars of specialist state aid at risk that is likely sometime next legislative session to get put back in. So there's some hope for some of that revenue. Expenditures dropping by over half a million dollars. And that's primarily due to the budget adjustments, which include closing an elementary school. And we're people business, so with the wage inflation, the expenditure is really only dropping by almost $600,000. I anticipate the fund balance to be a little over $2 million here when we close the books. The audit won't be in your hands, though, until December. So it'll take some time to work through everything, have the auditors out of sight three different times. But it's likely in November, Aaron or Jackie will present to the finance committee, and we'll know where we're at. And then in December, Aaron or Jackie from MMKI will present to the full school board. So a little bit about the development assumptions. Again, the legislature and the governor failed to deliver any direct revenue for school districts. You know, we've got school safety grants coming, that's part of the bonding bill. And when they went through pension bills, the legislature is covering the cost of TRA. That's increasing for folks, but they're covering the employer expense. Of course, we have 2% planned on the books for the general education formula allowance. It's going to be offset by the loss of kids. Maintaining the federal revenue at an even level. I know there's been talk about title programs having some reduction, but we're still budgeting for a level amount there. And we've incorporated the negotiation parameters that you've established for other bargaining units and projected those for all future units as we move through FY 19. We do have an increase in local revenue due in part to some of the fees that you put in place and our expected ability to collect all of those fees. And again, the budget adjustments of $2 million are incorporated, including closing the elementary school. So the pie chart looks pretty familiar, it's what you've seen before. State sources make up the bulk, almost 80% of our budget. Property taxes are at 16%. Many districts with exceedingly high referendum, near the $2,000 cap, show that the 20 to 25% of the pie chart. It would be nice to be in that position. Federal sources and then other local revenues are not insignificant, but borderline material at 3% each. On the expenditure side, like I mentioned, of course, we're a people business, so wages and benefits at $59 to $60 million make up 82% of that $72.5 million budget. So what can I tell you? I want this slide to be included so that anybody looking at this knows, the minute we publish this, it's wrong. Chester roadmap, something's going to change. We know we may have more or less kids. We know the state may or may not cover that special educational deficit, can you describe? So the budget is really a roadmap with where we're heading, and it's going to need to be updated periodically. We'll do that. We'll do it in the fall, we'll do it in the spring. But I think we're going to have our attention glued to election day in November because that's going to be critical to our long-term success. Questions or comments? If there aren't any, and there still may be, we'd ask approval for the budget this evening so we can begin operating July 1st.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve 2018, 2019 budget?
Move.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a comment, but again, so thankful that you're so clear, you made everything out. That's very easy to understand and explain, so kudos to you, you did a good job, and second of all.
I liked it, it's very good job of being conservative, which is good. It's always, it's all that we say, it's just a guess, really. A lot of these things that are, you have no control, yes, it's best you do.
I like the added ad for the adjective educated, yes.
Educated, yes, educated, yes, yes. Yeah, I'm just happy that, you know, it's hopefully we have less, you know, we don't have as many student halls that we're in. All I'm hoping for is in our buildings and great programming, hopefully some of these things back in the forest.
And then Larry, would if you possibly get a full copy of that on the budget?
We do plan on posting it.
Instead of this kind of a degree?
Oh, yeah, I just knew it was terrible to read, but I have to take a picture with my smartphone and then zoom in on it because I don't want to wear my cheaters.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
But we'll be posting it.
So just to clarify, did you say next spring legislative session, when preceding it, or on the backside, we'll find out about stating?
Backside.
Backside.
They never do things in a timely fashion, and I wish that wasn't the case.
Any other comments? Questions?
I would like to say I've been on the board a while, and I've always been very impressed with the way that our clients, finance department, looks at every trick, every thing they can do to lower costs. And so it's when I see that we're stuck in this kind of whirlpool of declining buying power, I always feel like I can trust our employees that they've done everything they can to make it right before we've had to do these cuts. So just appreciate your work, and I appreciate the work of people who work with you to kind of keep this ship afloat. Thank you.
They deserve a big round of thanks and applause, they all work very hard.
Absolutely. Any further comments? If there's no further comments, member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Rayco?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
And member Peterson?
Aye. Alright, thank you. 4-3, approved long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan approval for immediate, intermediate district 916.
We're all having to change it up. So this is our second review, this spreadsheet is coming to you. Member Tyson, it's slightly more legible, but not by much, I apologize for that. 916 is able to do long-term facilities maintenance revenue, and it's brokered amongst the member districts on a 50-50 split with tax capacity and scheme account. So we're going to ask you folks to do a resolution this evening approving NEM ISD's 916's LTFM budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for LTFM revenue. They only are assessing our taxpayers to the tune of $100,000 for FY 19, $100,000 for FY 2020, $76,000 is planned for FY 2021. Now, this is a 10-year plan, but it's really not wise to go out more than a few years because the legislature does meet every year, tinkers with this stuff. Sometimes they pull it away, sometimes they improve upon things. Recall, we're now in our third year of phasing in LTFM. But what they took away to provide this was health and safety revenue. They took away deferred maintenance revenue. And in the first year of phasing, we will lose over the process. For the year we're in, we're doing okay, and for next year, we'll do even better. They can change things, so I'm not really sure why we do a 10-year plan. The next agenda item will be for Forest Lake School District. So any questions on this resolution we'd like you to approve?
I just have one question. Is sufficient to approve the verdict from the agenda, or do you want the...
I would suggest approving the resolution for 916 long-term facilities maintenance revenue.
Okay.
And if the clerk is comfortable signing the document later with that motion, then we'd be fine.
Okay. Alright, any further questions? Alright, do we have a motion to approve the intermediate district 916 long-term facilities brokered plan?
So move to approve, 3.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Tyson?
Yes.
Member Rayco?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
And member Odegaard?
Aye.
Alright. 4-4, approved long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan approval for Forest Lake Area Schools District 831.
So with our plan, you'll see the magnitude of the dollars are far greater. We're talking about roughly $2.5 million annually. And the resolution we'd like you to approve is on the reverse side of this page. I should point out that long-term facility maintenance revenue is in order to maintain and repair things. So if you have a tennis court that's been red-tagged for safety purposes, you can use LTFM dollars to replace that tennis court. So our game plan is to use, if you look at the bottom of this document, site projects, and you look at FY 19 and FY 20, there's $150,000 in each of those. So next summer, the summer of 19, we'll use $150,000 of money available through June 30th, and then we'll use $150,000 of July 1 through the fiscal '20 budget. And place those tennis courts for $300,000 or less. The last time we took bids, it was just under $250,000 for the course just to the south. So the north courts, we plan on doing that within this plan. The way the Department of Ed requests these types of plans is not project specific, it's UFRS code specific. So I can talk to the fact that you're going to have tools to... So I can talk to the fact that you're gonna have tools to repair and replace roofs. We used to use capital dollars, they didn't take those away from us, so this is a nice shift. Now we no longer have to do roofing through capital dollars, but it can be here. If you're going to replace the track, for example, this new program will allow you to replace the high school track. If you desire to put bleachers in on the west side of the field, don't currently have any here, this program will not allow you to put new things in place. It won't allow you to do additions to a building. But it will allow you to replace the light poles, and then you could use capital dollars to work on a bleacher purchase. You could use these dollars to replace the bleachers that are to the east, but I don't know that that would necessarily be something you'd want to do. There are other tools that we can talk about as I describe the facility, and we'll probably get into that next year as we look to solve some issues that we're not able to. With question two, and now we've got a new program, so that's all very exciting.
Is there extra dollars that can be used?
So if you look at our budget here, there's two point six million dollars of long-term facility maintenance revenue, and we do special health and safety projects of one point nine million dollars through twenty twenty one. If you'll notice in the middle of the page, you can see around that indoor air quality line item. I've got a question mark. I don't know if that's gonna be targeted more for Riley or targeted for the central learning center. And you could target another project like that for twenty twenty two. Again, I suggest to you that planning out beyond three or four years is an exercise in futility, but we have here. And so as far as those projects, I've really only targeted specifics through twenty twenty, and earmarked something for twenty twenty one. And again, I think that the Building and Grounds Committee, other task forces that might be created, can better help the district work with some of these new resources to accomplish some of the things that we had on our list of needs in the past. I'd ask a similar resolution approval, that you do a roll call vote after approving your resolution for Forest Lake's long-term facility maintenance revenue.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution for long-term facilities maintenance revenue plan for the Forest Lake area schools, district eight three one? Sumo.
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, number clerk, please take a roll call.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
Number Olson votes aye. Number Corcoran?
Aye.
Number Morehead?
Aye.
Number Peterson?
Aye.
Number Odegaard?
Aye.
Number Tyson?
Aye.
Resolution was approved. Four five, resolution relating to the property tax payment, parking lot reconstruction, and improvement projects. Granting the abatement.
So as I mentioned earlier with the hearing approach, we've got three steps this evening in specific order. Granting the abatement refers to the taxing capacity for two million dollars of this nine million dollar project. We've got two more steps after this, and your final full commitment is on July nineteenth. So we'd ask you to approve the resolution granting the abatement.
Alright, motion to approve four, four point five, resolution relating to the property tax payment, parking lot reconstruction, and improvement projects.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, number clerk, please take a roll call.
Number Olson votes aye. Number Corcoran?
Aye.
Number Morehead?
Aye.
Number Peterson?
Aye.
Number Odegaard?
Aye.
Number Tyson?
Aye.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
Four six, resolution relating to eight million nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars general obligation facilities maintenance and tax payment bonds, series two oh one eight A, stating official intent to proceed with and authorizing the issuance and sale thereof and providing credit enhancement with respect thereto.
So what's exciting here, Springstad has determined that if we combine the abatement bonds and the LTFM bonds into one issue, we're going to have better marketability and lower issuance costs. So that's a real positive. These two issues combined now, instead of being a little over nine million, are priced at eight million nine hundred twenty-five thousand. The credit enhancement is related to the fact that we have an A-two rating through movies. We'll talk to them again the week of July ninth. But we do credit enhancements so that we can use the state of Minnesota's credit rating. They have this process available for all school districts. And the only requirement is that we pay our principal an interest three days ahead of time so that the state can guarantee payment of that in the event a school district were to default. So we'd ask your approval now on the resolution relating to official intent to sell and credit enhancement.
Good. Motion to approve four six?
Sumo, second.
Discussion? Alright, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, number clerk, please take a roll call.
Number Corcoran?
Aye.
Number Morehead?
Aye.
Number Peterson?
Aye.
Number Odegaard?
Aye.
Number Tyson?
Aye.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
And number Olson votes aye.
Resolutions approved. Four seven, resolution relating to the financing of a proposed project to be undertaken by the school district, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
So we feel it's prudent to capture projects that we're doing this summer and paying for this summer. Anything we do within sixty days of August sixteenth can be reimbursed by those bonds. So they're working right now on Lila Lake's parking lot. They're working right now on the parking lot of Forest Lake area middle school. And so anything that we can capture within sixty days of August sixteenth, we'd like to do that. So ask the board to approve this resolution for reimbursement.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve four seven?
Sumo, second.
Any further discussion?
Larry, is there a question? Do we find out about that through Springstad, or are you like finding out these things?
Well, I've been aware of the reimbursement regulation, and we just double-checked at a meeting with a bunch of business managers. And it's pretty interesting that the gal that answered the question from the panel was actually our bond house here, Andrea Hattie from Corcy. So it's something that Stacy would have suggested had I not asked for it in advance. They provide those services. End of resolutions this evening.
Any further chit-chat? If there's no further chit-chat, number clerk, please take a roll call.
Number Morehead?
Aye.
Number Peterson?
Aye.
Number Odegaard?
Aye.
Number Tyson?
Aye.
Number Rayfield?
Aye.
Number Olson votes aye, and number Corcoran?
Aye.
The resolution's approved. We have no new business, and we have a motion to adjourn. Sumo.
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll attempt to say aye.
Aye.
I'll post. Thanks, everyone.